I'd like to call the April Board Meeting to session. It is 6:40 PM. And start, everyone start by taking a couple of minutes just to review the agenda and then we'll start the process. All right, so this board meeting is being recorded and see, we will, the board will move to the executive session at the end of, at the end of open session to discuss litigation strategy and to consider the real purchase or lease of real property as doing so in open session would be detrimental to our position. And so, let's see, we do have public comment available for anyone who would be interested in doing that. Sign up if you are interested. And we'll start by reviewing and approving the minutes from the March and April meetings.
Sarah, just in the monthly update for parent rep, Ms. Lindsay is not capitalized, so just.
In which one is that?
It's in, it's under four parent rep monthly update in the first paragraph.
And just want to come on as a team planning session minutes. Sarah already knows this and I think she made the change, but I left early, so I didn't, wasn't part of the motion to adjourn.
Oh, I've changed it since then, but thank, I'll record that as noted.
So Sarah, on the parent rep update, just a clarification, the letter that I was talking about is not for board candidates, it's actually regarding development.
Oh.
It would be a whole new letter.
Okay.
To potentially go out, not to conflict with the annual campaign, but it would be more a letter to parents.
Regarding development.
Regarding development.
Okay.
Yeah.
With the, what are we asking, was there experience?
That was still the question, like how do we draft it? How do we, what do we really ask for without sounding too, I don't know. Finess that.
All right. Entertaining motion to approve the March 28th minutes?
So moved.
Liz. Liz, and second by Raul. All in favor?
I'm abstaining too.
Abstentions from Raul and Pauline. Motion passes.
So Pauline is the senior?
Pauline and, Pauline and Raul.
Does it make sense that I second and abstain?
Yes. You're just, your seconding just calls, calls the vote into, so yes, you may. The seeking approval, looking for motion to approve the strategic planning session number two.
So move with the correction. If you know it.
Second.
Motion, motion to approve as amended the April 6th strategic meeting. All in favor?
All right.
Abstaining from that too?
Yeah, I left early, so I'll have to abstain.
Okay, Jean and Pauline have abstained. Motion passes unanimously. Do we have a public comment? Seeing none. One other administrative piece before I pass the baton to Ellen. I'm looking for a timekeeper for today's meeting. Raul, thank you. All right, Ellen, you're up.
Yeah, do Jess.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Just move that up.
Yes. Jess, Owen has been nominated by the faculty to be the board representative for the faculty and we as a board need to vote to accept that nomination. So discussion? No discussion, all entertaining motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the faculty nomination of Jess Bowen as faculty rep.
I'll second.
So Pauline, second by Liz. All in favor?
You missed us.
Welcome back. You're, you're, you're welcome to attend, join the table in the discussion.
Did you drop her old?
I did.
Right. So you're welcome to participate in all the discussions, but at this point you can still not vote.
Okay.
Until these, until final disapproval, but you're, as chair, I'm inviting you to participate in all discussions that we are having this evening.
Thank you. It's nice to be back.
And you will soon be up as our faculty representative update, but first I'll pass the baton to Ellen for the ED's report.
All right. See if we can razzle and dazzle you this month. All right, well, welcome to the April 25th, what does Jess need to report? Oh, microphone, so sorry. We can hear you. Okay, that's the most important people, right? Okay, so just give you a quick overview of the report, I don't want to get in your way there. So this month, and you'll, you'll see, we'll be voting on this a little bit later, but we're going to switch around the calendar for next year, but right now we're going to look at the 2018 in particular PSAT report, but I also brought the 2017 numbers so you could do a little bit of comparison there and hopefully see some evidence of growth. And then we're going to take a look at a proposal that we're, we're planning to put forth to the governance committee in May about changing, shifting the school day. We're not asking for a vote, this is just to kind of put it out there for something for you to think about over the next few weeks. And then we have a special guest star here with us, Mr. Jordan Hill, who's one of our teachers, he's in the back, and he's going to be talking to you about academic excellence at its best here at AMSA. It's a new proposal that we're, well, it's a new project that we've, we've launched and it's the Diderot Academic Society and Jordan's going to present to us about that in a few minutes. This is something we've been working on for months now. And then we'll have a community outreach update and then some razzle dazzle time. Okay, here we start, PSAT report. So if you take a look at some of these, these numbers here, so this, these are mean scores, this is 2018, and what I did, and this is 2017, so what I've done is color coded it for you so you can take a look at in red, this is the ninth grade class, their mean score between the, the math and the, the reading, writing section. And then this, they've obviously become 10th graders here in 2018. So their mean score was 1,081 in ninth grade, but as 10th graders, now they've taken a jump up to 1,181. This is a different test. This is the PSAT that the 10th and 11th graders take, the ninth graders take a PSAT 8.9, but College Board says that they've, they've graded the test so that you can see growth between ninth grade and 10th grade. And the same thing with our 10th graders, the mean, mean score of the PSAT was 1,190. When they became 11th graders, it went up to 1,237. And then you can see, sorry Roger, I'm in your way. But you can see the state and the national numbers too. Does anyone have any questions about any of those, those numbers? Those, that's, that's a summary slide, just so you can take a quick look at it. I also have slides from, you'll see the next one here, because I just, I thought this was interesting, I like numbers and I like statistics, but this is the PSAT for the 11th grade scores for the fall of 2018. So the kids took the test in October and then we got the results back like in December, which is why it's kind of off that we're, we're reviewing these so late in the year. But so you can see the, the school, we had 135 students take the test, the mean score was 1,237. So the benchmarks that they're looking for, for the, for the English writing is 460, that's the benchmark that, that College Board is looking for, for our students to meet. And for math, it's 510. So what they're saying is that 90% of our students reached both benchmarks. The, the English, 96% of them reached that, the math, 90% reached that score or higher. And then there was only 3% of our students who took the test of 135 who did not meet either one of the benchmarks. Now, I think it's pretty impressive when you start looking at the.
What are these benchmarks? Are they means or are they lower than, what?
They, they are what College Board wants to see as a target. So they're saying that the student is on par to be.
It's on a college track.
Yes. If they're able to, to reach these scores for, for these tests.
For sort of just a four-year college track.
Yes.
Okay.
So this is, they're, they have their benchmarks, which says if the students reach this, then they are ready and getting prepared to take the SAT. They're, they're making progress. We obviously want to far exceed those, those numbers. And when you take a look at the state and the total group, and that means nationally, and there's some international students who take it too, but nationally, and you see that none, that in the state, 29% of the students who took the test didn't hit either one of those benchmarks and 30% in the nation. And at AMSA, only 3% of our students didn't hit those benchmarks. I, I think that's, that's an amazing, that it really shows how well our students are doing on the PSAT. And these are 11th graders, so these students took this test in the fall and they're taking the SAT through the, through the winter and spring. So there's a test at the end of January and then March and then May and June. And so they're getting ready, this is their final practice. And I, we have amazing results. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do we have comparison numbers versus previous years to say?
Yeah, that's what that other one was.
Yep, so, so I'll shoot, actually I have one of these slides for, so there's six of them.
Okay. I'll hold.
And it gives the same information, I don't know if you're interested in looking at them in detail, but Mark, can you just, yep. So here's the 2018, here's our results for our 10th graders. Once again, three, only 3% of our students didn't meet both benchmarks. The next one, Mark? And then these are the results from our ninth graders, keeping in mind that once again, this is a different test. Our eighth graders do not take the test, just our ninth graders. But, so this is our ninth grade class, 156 students took the test and 4% of them did not hit the benchmark that we had hoped that they would. But once again, you're looking at, on a state level, 44% did not reach the benchmark and 39% in the nation. Now, these are the 2017 numbers. So the first slide I showed you was a summary just of the means from these reports. But in 2017, we're still in the same, you know, in the same ballpark for the most part. It's 3% here that met none, 91% had met both this particular year in 2017. Now it's not, it was 90% in 2018. And these are the 10th graders, I think we were 3% this, this year in 2018, 4% in 2019. And ninth grade, both 4%, I'd have to look to the, next to each other to see exactly on the percentages on the other two. Any questions on the PSAT numbers? I think our kids did an amazing job. Go ahead, Jean.
Do you know the rankings where we stand with respect to other schools in Massachusetts?
I can find that number out for you, but I don't have that.
You don't, okay.
No, sorry.
I just find that rankings are something that we can easily digest and it's hard to wrap our mind around all of this stuff, whereas, you know, you get a single number, you say we're a third or fifth or wherever, it really relates a lot to our thinking about it.
I'm sure it's out there, we can find it. For, I guess for me, it's interesting to me to see our, our numbers here compared to the state as a whole, but, but I can look for rankings for you.
Don't go nuts, bud.
Thank you.
Ellen, do you know how much of these numbers are self-selecting? In other words, at AMSA, pretty much all of our students take it, is that kind of the norm at other schools?
It isn't, actually other schools do it very different ways, yep. Some, some schools have a Saturday program, because you can either, College Board allows you to administer the PSAT either on Wednesdays or on a Saturday. And the school has to make the choice whether they want it, you know, to be taken during the school day. You are losing time in the classroom, we feel it's important enough to do that, but some schools say we're just going to give it on Saturdays. And so that's, that's, you know, a barrier for some of those kids who would have a difficult time getting to school. Some schools pay for it, it's free for the kids to take it. There's all kinds of different programs at different schools.
That's a very good point. Because, I mean, I think that's super impressive, especially because it's, I don't know if we have 100% participation, but it's, it's pretty close.
Very, very close.
And I'm not sure that that's true of the state in the.
Yep, that's true.
That's very true.
That class, there's probably 158 and so 156 took the test, so that is very impressive.
So that's just probably two people being named, right, and just didn't take it?
Right.
Because they would have taken if they were. Or their parents don't want them testing sometimes or whatever, but it's, it's a small number here at AMSA.
Very small number, you know, we've committed a lot of resources to the PSAT and, you know, our teachers do a great job helping us out to administer that because if you're testing 156 students, that's a huge effort. Okay, Mark?
Question?
Yes.
So, do we, so I sort of view, maybe if you go back a slide, that our success on here is very simple, is just another instantiation of the MCAS, that we are, we are doing very well in getting our kids above, we have no trouble talent passing the MCAS tests with our students, the way our curriculum's laid out, we have no trouble hitting this, getting the minimally ready for college.
Absolutely, I think this is a great testament to the work that we do here because our students, we've never taught to a test, right? We don't teach the MCAS, we don't teach to a PSAT. Our kids are, are working hard and they're, the curriculum takes them well beyond that. And I think that this, this shows in our numbers. Our, our kids typically aren't nervous taking tests. They, they have the information they need. For more than anything else, it's with the 11th graders, they have to go back and practice the math that they learned in middle school to be reminded of some of those simpler problems. I was in a, a math class just before break and they were doing just that. Mr. Azeredo was working with the students, refreshing their memory from math that they learned in eighth grade, getting ready for, for the MCAS, so.
So what I was looking for though was, I don't see a comparison to say how our, comparison over time to say in, the mean score of our 2016 class as juniors was 555. Our mean score of our 2018 class as juniors was 600, so there's no.
Well, it, it's here for 2017 and 2018.
The College Board, interestingly enough, on their website, you can't go back past two years worth of.
We could record.
I bet we've got it.
We can, we can.
I'm sure we could.
Record the data, so we can, we can definitely see that the students, as they go through the system, are increasing their test scores. But I'm trying to say it would be.
Class by class.
Class by class comparison, are we, if we do something different or if we just keep doing the same thing, are, are we getting better results, worse results, you know, sort of correlation between the.
Mark, can I, can I have you go back?
I don't recall seeing this minimal whatever thing before.
Several slides.
I think.
No, because it's new.
To the summary.
The test is new, so they changed.
This met ERW, met ER, math, that, that, the met, whatever their.
The benchmark.
The benchmark is, that's a new thing, that.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing that.
This went along with the new SAT, so they've, they've aligned it.
But I don't, but personal opinion, I don't think that that's our goal.
Right, right.
Is to have 100% of our people.
Right.
Crossing that low, for us, a low hurdle. I want, our goal, as you described, we don't teach the test, our goal is much higher. So what is, maybe it'll take a couple of years to get, to define the method, so what is our goal?
Mark, go back to that original summary slide, follow me.
And how, what percentage of our students are making it?
Yes, but I think we have to be careful because when they change, because.
Yeah.
The average SAT score each year is different, so we would have to normalize to the average.
That's why ranking fixes all of this.
Yeah, exactly. No, that's actually a good point. That actually is a good point.
If you have rankings, so any, all of these numbers can change as much as necessary.
I'll bring your rankings next month.
I think that actually is a good point, because otherwise you can't compare.
Right, because the test, the test itself varies from year to year.
It varies year to year, exactly.
So you can't, you can't compare.
Right.
We can continue to add to this slide in years going forward and in the meantime, I can look for rankings and get those to you for next month.
You've got 11 minutes left. You've got 11 minutes.
Of my 25?
Yes.
Okay, all right, gosh. No, okay. So anyways, sneak peek at the schedule change, we'll, we'll go through this really quickly. This is something that's going to go to governance, I have May 14th there, but we're going to be talking about some date shifts and then potentially, if it makes it through governance, we'll come to the board for a vote for our May board meeting, but, and also our bylaws would need to be amended. We want you to know that this was a teacher initiated proposal and it was a very reflective process, the teachers went through an amazing amount of work, which you'll see in more detail next month, that is the foundation of this, of this proposal. We also want to point out that there's no loss on time on learning and actually there's quite a gain of time on learning for our athletes. Mark? So this is what it, what it looks like, we still have eight periods per day, we have, those eight periods are still 45 minutes. The proposal is to start 10 minutes earlier, change passing time from five minutes to four minutes. When I first came to AMSA, passing time was actually three minutes. We went up to five, might be a little too long, so we're looking at going at four and next month we can show you data that we can tell you any student in the class, in the whole school, on day two of their schedule, how many steps they actually take per day between classes. There, we are taking out homeroom and the students would report directly to first period, this is not unusual, it's done a lot at, at high schools, at most high schools actually. And the day would end at 2:45. You can see here lunches are still 22, 23, 22 minutes, 45 minute classes. And by eliminating homeroom and moving that passing time, we are coming in 10 minutes earlier in the morning, but we save 30 minutes at the end of the day. That's the proposal. Mark? The benefits, just, I want to give you one quick benefit to the, because once again, we're not going to get into this much further, but the benefit for our athletes, right now leaving 3:15, so, you know, we're only talking about class times missed between August 27, 2018, November 2nd, 50 days of school for just fall sports, but they analyzed every single one of our athletes from the fall and how many periods, how many minutes a day they're missing to leave class, to get on a bus, to go to practice somewhere, to go to, go to a game to someplace. And at 3:15, when we have that dismissal, our kids, our, our athletes are missing 5660 minutes or 109 and a half hours or 140, almost 146 periods a season, okay? That's all of them leaving to go to participate in sports, which we believe is very important and we want them to participate in those, but they're losing a lot of time because all the other schools that they're competing against get out much earlier in the day. If we change to 2:45, we're reducing that down to 2,505 minutes of missed class time or just 41, not that, not that we want them to miss 41 hours of, of class time, but that's what dropping us by a half hour would, would drop us too, from 109 to 42 and then missing from 146 periods a day to 55.67 periods a day. I don't, I mean, those results are absolutely amazing and I think that's, when the teachers came and presented this idea to us, that just, we couldn't, we couldn't believe that the number of hours our kids are missing with, with sports. Okay, so I'm under a huge time crunch here, so I'm going to turn the time over to, to Jordan Hill for a Diderot Academic Society project that we're working on and, next slide, Mark? Just a quick little introduction, Mr. Hill has been with us during AMSA in January of 2018, he teaches AP Literature, English 9 and Philosophy. He's amazing, we're thrilled and honored to have him as a member of our faculty and I'm turning the time over, Jordan.
Thank you. Good evening, thanks for having me here to talk. So we're, we're pretty excited, Dr. Lewis and I and everyone else, pretty much, we're really excited to have this new five pillar interdisciplinary academic society that, that we're proposing here and that we're actually running with. The idea behind the Diderot Society is basically to promote the joy and love of learning. What's unique about the Diderot Society is that we are designing it to be an intellectual, AMSA's first intellectual academic club for students. It's five pillars, so if you would go, Dr. Lewis, if you want to scroll down and show the, the board, the different thinkers, we're hoping that this sort of inspires students. This is going to be kind of an Enlightenment Intellectual Society here at AMSA and we're hoping that this gets students inspired to talk about the things that they're studying in class, outside of class. So the idea here is this, the Diderot Society is obviously named after the French Enlightenment philosopher Denise Diderot and it has five pillars, if you would go to the about section, Dr. Lewis. The main hub, the, the central focus here is the actual club, so what, what we're going to have is an after-school academic society, it's a, it's a weekly academic philosophy, sort of a young philosophers' society, which they have at other high schools, we're calling this the Diderot Society. And essentially, we're going to run this club like a class, not in terms of the extreme rigor of tons and tons of work, but the students will take home readings over the course of the week, they will show up at our club meetings and we'll have philosophical discussions about contemporary issues. We're structuring our curriculum for this society based on the book Justice by Michael Sandel, he's a Harvard professor, and we're going to sort of chop up the curriculum into a bunch of different units essentially, starting with utilitarianism, moving into Kantian ethics, Aristotle, John Rawls, basically Enlightenment thinkers. So we'll be exploring Enlightenment ideas, teaching them the philosophies, they'll go home and do their readings and then they'll come in and after we've taught them the ideas, they'll use those ideas as lenses through which to view contemporary issues and actually have civil discourse and debate. The, the five pillars are the club, obviously, that's the central, that's the central pillar there. Orbiting around that are sort of a bunch of different initiatives that students can get involved with, in fact, they have to to be a part of the club, be involved with at least one of these initiatives. The academic journal that we're starting at this school is called The North Star, named after Frederick Douglass's paper that he started. We're doing a podcast, which is designed to promote academic excellence, so we'll be interviewing teachers and students and having intellectual discussions via a podcast and also keeping the community up to date with what we're doing in the Diderot Society. We'll be doing bi-annual interdisciplinary colloquium nights, which means that in December and in May, we're actually going to do TED Talks and debates and things like that with students being involved and teachers being involved. And then we're also planning to have an international trip where we take the students to some, you know, hub of Enlightenment thinking, whether it's, you know, France or Germany or England or Greece or something like that. So that's essentially the setup of the society. How much time do I have here?
Three minutes.
Okay.
Take your time.
So, so essentially, what's unique about the Diderot Society is that the Diderot Society, if students participate in Diderot Society in good stead, they will actually earn a designation on their transcript and special cords for being a part of this intellectual endeavor on their, when they graduate, they'll, they'll get a special colored cord. We don't, don't have anything like this at AMSA, we have, you know, National Honor Society where students are doing service and things like that and, but this is really an intellectual society. We want kids debating, engaging in civil discourse, one of the things that we care about with this club is teaching students how to disagree respectfully in an open form of debate, in the sort of open marketplace of ideas. So we're going to teach them these philosophical ideas and then have structured discussions each week, you know, using the philosophies that we've taught them as lenses. Some of the requirements that students will have to meet to be a part of this and stay in good stead with the Diderot Society, they basically have to show up, meet attendance requirements, you know, show that they're engaged and thoughtful members. requirements, you know, show that they're engaged and thoughtful, thoughtful, respectful, active members of our club. You know, one of the things that we care about is the extent to which this society is able to promote our core values, integrity, community, and excellence. We want this to be enhancing of those different values. So obviously, this will enhance community in the sense that we're going to have students from all walks of life, from all different backgrounds, coming together to discuss issues respectfully and civilly. Obviously, it promotes academic excellence, because they'll be using what they've learned in school and what they've learned in the Diderot Society as fodder for discussion and debate and critical thinking. And also, absolutely, so that's excellence and, and community and, oh my goodness, what's the other one?
It's right there.
Integrity. So that, thank you. I'm in here. So integrity matters to us in this club, and that's actually one of the requirements for the club. And so, in order to stay in good stead with the Diderot Society, students, you know, have to, you know, they can't be cheating. Plagiarism will get you kicked out of the club. You know, being respectful, you know, students in the halls and in their classrooms, you know, being civic-minded at the school, being involved in things. And so, there are a couple of things. The other thing that the students have to do to stay in good stead with Diderot is to take part in one of these initiatives. So students have to, we'll sit them down, and we basically create a plan for them. They have to get involved with one of the other pillars. So everyone has to show up to the club meetings, but students also have to pick one other thing that they'd like to be involved in, so they can contribute a piece to the academic journal. They can help edit our podcasts and do interviews. They can set up and plan and host the colloquium nights. They can help us plan the trips. So this, this will get students involved, it will build community, and obviously, it's enhancing and reinforcing excellence. And, and so that's about, that's about all I wanted to say. Another thing that I suppose I'll close on is that this idea came out of the Academic Excellence Committee. So Dr. Lewis and I have been talking about this for a long time. We really developed these ideas with all of the feedback and the input from colleagues at the Academic Excellence Committee. And we've got a lot of support and a lot of great feedback, and that's sort of molded and shaped the direction of the, of the society. And another thing that I want to say is that we've seen an extreme level of excitement and involvement. We've been hosting these sort of brainstorming sessions with students, so that they could have some input into, you know, the direction of the club. And we're getting 20 students show up and staying until 5 o'clock to discuss where they want this to go. You know, we're going to elect cabinet members, you'll have a president, you'll have a vice president. But we're really excited about this, and we just hope that it's something that can make, something that can be special and unique about us. We want the community and one of other schools to know that we do this unique thing, the Diderot Society, that I don't think any other school is doing. So it's kind of a young philosopher's club, but it has many components to it. And we think that will really give us an edge in a lot of ways.
What grades is this open to?
10 through 12. And the reason that is, is because we wanted to open it to 9 through 12, but some of the issues that we're discussing, not only do they have to be dealt with with nuance and sophistication, and we want the debate to be fluent, and we want things to go well, but also there are just issues probably ninth periods aren't ready to engage with yet, right? So if we're studying utilitarianism as a philosophy, and one of our contemporary issues is immigration, we want students to be able to have nuanced, thoughtful opinions, whatever those opinions may be. So this society is really about heterodoxy and giving students a chance to engage in critical thinking. Other questions?
Is it only for students?
No, actually. So one of the great things about this is we're hoping that this society can enhance, can sort of foster interdisciplinary collaboration. So many of the teachers have expressed interest in showing up, attending the meetings, teaching concepts and things like that. I have a background in philosophy, and Dr. Lewis obviously has a background in history. And so we're hoping that, you know, combining our powers will, will give the students, you know, solid foundation, the ideas that we're teaching them. But also, we're inviting math teachers and science teachers. So for example, when we discuss, say, Kantian ethics, maybe we'll spend, maybe we'll meet and talk about stem cells, well, maybe we'll need a science person for that. So we're inviting colleagues to show up and give presentations and interact with the students. We're hoping that kind of brings us together.
How can we?
Sorry.
How can we be so, how can we, it sounds great. How can we be so unique, since it sounds so great? You would think other schools would embrace this.
Well, they have young philosopher's clubs, they have debate teams. One of the reasons that we're doing this, in fact, is to kind of get away from the overly rigidly structured debate team-style model, where students are doing these hyper-organized, structured group discussions and other things like that. This is a chance for students to respond to each other face-to-face, in person, for us to sit around in a circle and talk about complex issues at a deeper level, right? So we'll be asking, you know, if we talk about, you know, income inequality, we'll be talking about, what is the telos of America? We'll be debating about that instead of the sort of superficial partisan back and forth. We're getting down to the very deep philosophical roots of why we believe what we believe.
And Jean, actually, Hofstra University has an honors college, and they have a program program that's called Culture and Expression. It's very similar to this. It's interdisciplinary, they do these trips, they have podcasts, they, it's like, it sounds like the program my daughter's in in college right now, so.
That does sound similar. And I would say that the one thing that makes this unique is that we're taking a kind of Enlightenment strain to it. We're kind of focusing on classical historical Enlightenment ideas that have sort of shaped the modern West. So that's our idea.
But relevant to it, current events.
Totally relevant.
Exactly, yeah, that's great.
Kristin, you had a question?
What I was going to say is, you know, it does sound fabulous, but, you know, it's another international trip for the students. How many did we have this year?
Oh, it's, it's, that's an optional part of it.
Yeah, but I think that's, I think that's tough for a club where everyone is invited to then need to or want to participate, and that's a financial burden again on the students. So I think that that's a little...
That's something we've talked about.
That is one of our concerns, too. And so that is sort of the international trip question, Mark, right? And so, we're certainly not going to do it in spring of 2020. And so we're trying to figure out if and when it's possible to do that trip.
But you said you're going to the hub of Enlightenment thinking.
That's the idea.
And Boston came to my mind.
Yeah, I thought the same.
You can do a local trip first.
Yeah, me, too.
Definitely thought of field trips to Harvard, go to attend lecture at Harvard. It's a great idea, Jean. And MIT, Brown, any number of great universities that we had in Massachusetts. So we could do, if we don't do a trip to a mecca like Paris, we could do trips to a mecca like Harvard.
I think one of the things that I find so exciting about it is so many of our extracurricular academic activities, speech and debate, math teams, science bowl, quiz bowl, which of course is near, they're, they're competition-based. And I think it's one of the things that AMSA has sort of had as a niche, is this competitive nature. And I just love this idea of exploring a non-competitive celebration of learning and that being, I just, I think it's fabulous.
So when's the podcast going to start?
Rule's ready to drop it. He's like, he's on board.
Please come and join us. I mean, I agree with that. As Jordan was saying, this is, this works as a community organization. We want math teachers, science teachers, history teachers, English teachers, we want board members, students, parents. The more discussion and debate, the better. Keep an eye on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is so exciting. It's been, it's been months in the making. One of the ways that I know that this little, this project, this program is unique, Jean, is, is because it was actually born in Dr. Lewis's mind over a weekend. And so, and quickly, Jordan was brought in. But, but, yes, yes. The very seed of it. So we're, we're very excited about it, and I really, I believe this could be the beginning of the very foundation of academic excellence here at AMSA. One of the things that excites me the most about it, too, Jess, is that it's for all students, all students, all background, all abilities. This is for students who, who are looking to find joy of learning. And it's, no one will be kept out because their GPA isn't a 4.0. You can have a student who wants to debate these issues, who's passionate about these issues, who loves these things, and spends hours reading at home about these issues. But they are going to have a place in this society, and it's going to spark joy of learning through all our students, and we are all very committed. Okay, we're going out to community outreach here. Synovian has been working with four of our seniors, one of our juniors, and they've just completed their nervous system class to the lab of seventh graders. Each of those students will be awarded a $2,500 scholarship from Synovian. And Mark, if you click on this and just, you'll see, this is a one-minute video to show you our students in action with the seventh grade class.
The nervous system is a network of nerve cells and fibers that transmit nerve impulses throughout the body. This allows you to control your body and for all parts of your body to communicate with each other. It's also important to know that the electrical signal that passes through neurons is also called an action potential. So it gets like, I have reflexes. It feels weird. It's a one, very enough to... Okay, this one. Wait, it's getting better. What? It's got smaller. Smaller. Yeah. It's really smaller. Ooh!
Really quite great.
Whoa.
What'd you say?
They're like, um, what's it called? People, people got smaller.
So not only did, did our five participating students, who worked with scientists from Synovian over a number of weeks, didn't, they learned so much and took so much from this. They went back and they shared it with their seventh-grade younger students here at AMSA, and, and you saw the joy in their faces, the smiles, the laughter. That is true community there, and it's academic excellence at its very best.
How did this opportunity come about?
This was all Mark Vidal. Mark had a connection with Synovian, and it was actually an idea that Mark had. Do you want to speak a second about it?
A lot of companies now will tell me, well, we can't have paid internships, which is not true, because we all know that Thermo Fisher doesn't. But I don't take no for an answer. So what I try to do is say, well, what about a project? And they say, well, keep talking. And I say, well, we can work a project out where our teachers, where our students will learn something, will build something, and then they will get a scholarship, you know, at the, at the end. And then they say, well, I think we can do that, you know? And then they got to go up and try to, right now, I'm negotiating with Quest Diagnostics across the street for a very, almost the same type of project, where our kids would be, would produce a anti-opioid campaign, students, students informing other students about the hazards of opioids, because opioids is one of the things over at opioid testing is one of the things over there at Quest. And the same, Mark, they, they don't want to do internships, but they'll do scholarships. Well, if, you get to figure out the math, it's better for our students to get the scholarship than it is to get the $14 an hour, you know, internship.
All right. How do they select the students? Was it an application process?
Oh, yes.
This was an application process.
I sent an email out to all seniors and said, you know, hey, this is an opportunity. A bunch of folks had an initial interest, but then they had to put together a resume and a cover letter and do interviews. We narrowed it down to these four outstanding ladies. And just, in the past, I've always tried to keep a junior, because that junior that we selected will be one of the seniors for next year, and can kind of say, hey, this worked last year, this didn't work, and that type of thing.
So Boston Scientific, just to give you a quick update there, they will be, we will be submitting two names of juniors for six-week internship this summer. They're going to be working on developing a 12-month, one-hour-long STEM curriculum for an after-school program in Marlboro. Also, Boston Scientific just donated nine huge workstations they're going to use in our engineering lab. We've been told they're worth about $5,000 apiece. So 45,000. Okay, just a quick update about the superintendents. They came to visit on April 10th. It was amazing. We had seven of them here. They did a rotation through math, science, humanities classes. Then we took them in, and they did a student-led demo of the SEM, the Phenomenal SEM. They were so impressed with that. Then we did a question-answer session with teachers and administrators back in our office. Next one's, Mark? These are some of the, I got thank you emails back, along with those flowers that I got. That was, we forgot to take pictures, so that was the only evidence that we had, was the flowers that they sent to thank Anders and I afterwards. And then these are some of the thoughts. You know, thank you so much for opening the doors of AMSA to all of us yesterday. Thoroughly enjoyed the visit and was particularly impressed by the students in the research course. Lovely getting to see AMSA in action, very impressive place. Your teachers are so devoted to the kids and passionate about their subject matter. And what a wonderful morning it was. Class visits, SEM demonstrations, students were spectacular, and the discussion with staff at lunch is so heartwarming to be, with fellow educators doing their best to serve their students, just as it is the case with those in the traditional public schools. So it was, it was a great day. Thoroughly enjoyed by everyone. Next one, Mark? All right, razzle-dazzle time. We're going to keep this really quick. Next one. All right, we had Science Night. This is a quick one-minute. I just, before we click on that, I just want to let you know, so we had a little pre, pre-get together with some hors d'oeuvres, with folks from Quest Diagnostics. There was three or four folks from Quest and Viastat. It was very nice to, to interact with them. Quest was amazing, because they, you know, they came back. I got to experience some time with them, with Joe Benjiani, our chemistry teacher, and Dr. Scott Jurey, head of our science department, and these four folks from Quest. And they're in the research lab, and they are lit up, and they're all like telling chemistry jokes. And so, you know, I was just nodding along and giggling with them. I didn't really know what they were talking about, but they were talking about all kinds of slides and Petri dishes. I don't even know if you call them that anymore, but they just, they were having a wonderful time. And the Quest folks were all over the lab, and they're looking at everything, and they're saying, my goodness, we throw away stuff that's better than what you have, and you've got great stuff. So let's get a list together on what we can get you folks. It was wonderful to have them. They were so lit up, and they all want to be a greater part of AMSA. Let's click on this just to see our wonderful kids in action on Science Night.
This is commonly used for cancer research. If it's tagged with a CD133 gene...
This is where we study. So the woods behind here, and then to do this, basically, like, our procedure, we start off by some, like, our apparatus of, like, actually where we're going to pour the jessis. Testing with our XRF machine, which is X-ray fluorescence.
They go on the glass, maybe? They're either fine. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Track a gene called CD133, our prominent one, which is highly expressed with cancer stem cells. So I think in terms of, like, the things here that are listed in the prose, I think people can see the benefits of using this for sure.
Are humans, humans are the only ones? And I put it on a glass slide, and then I put it under the microscope, and I got those pictures of the spores.
I guess it takes a lot of practice to kind of think, understand how it works.
Thank you so much for keeping me going here. You need a clicker, I'll get you a clicker. You need a clicker.
So now we're 18 minutes over.
18 minutes over. Oh, bummer. Okay, really quick. All right, so we had a student. This, this is Shane Frante. He qualified for the American Junior Mathematical Olympiad. We're very, very proud of him. First student since 2011, when Nick Via qualified, so we're super happy for Shane. He took the test last week. Okay, we have Alice in Wonderland coming up, April 26th, 27th, this weekend. Okay, we won't go into this, but we did a race car project here. Ms. Johnson's Contemporary Lit class did it. Black Student Union participated, faculty and staff participated, they had cards all around, and you tried to express your thoughts around race in six words. Great process, and I think gave everyone some time to reflect. Cold War trip, just a huge thank you to Eli and Anders and Brianna Murphy and Aaron McAdams and Liz Marina, who took 27 students and traveled with them to Germany, Poland, the Czech Republic, and Austria. It was an amazing trip. And here's some of our pictures of our amazing kids having a great time. Just take a quick look at there with Brianna Murphy and what she's holding there. She could scare anybody. I love that photo, I think it should be framed. And there they all are, having, having a meal together. Next one. Okay, and we also had the Glapco strip. You all might have heard that some kids got sick, they weren't our kids. So a huge thank you to Alex Waldron, Christie, Chris, Lisa Tebow, and Jack. They took 32 kids. They took eight flights. It was crazy, but they had an amazing time. And look at these kids at the equator, down under the water. There's Chris Brandis, one of our science teachers with the big huge tortoise in the back. Those are lizards on the left-hand side. And then we had National Honor Society induction Monday night, which was an amazing event because it's a great opportunity. Whoa, Mark, you went one too many. And the National Honor Society of Kids, it was amazing. I love this event. It's one of my very, very favorite events of the year because our kids get an opportunity to stand up and thank our teachers and appreciate them for the wonderful, wonderful gifts that they are in our students' lives. And it's so heartwarming because they get to reflect back and they get to say thank you to the people who have changed their lives the most, the educators who have taken care of them all these years. And the next one, you know, the Sox need some help this year, but in Alex Cora, we trust because we still believe in the Red Sox. So I hope that you'll all send us some. That part is over. All right. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Ellen. Fantastic.
Too many exciting things going on.
A lot of exciting things, I know.
Keep up the exciting things.
Yeah, keep up.
Okay, we've already confirmed the faculty rep and so. Faculty rep-to-be, would you like to?
Do you have an update?
I don't have a huge update. I was just elected at the beginning of the month. I'm excited to be back. It's a busy month coming up for staff. If you've never worked in a school from April, the end of, when you come back from April break, it's just buckle up and hold on to the end of the year. So I'm sure you're, as parents, you're feeling that too. So we have the play and we have AP weeks coming up and MCAS testing weeks coming up and field trips and proms and all of the exciting things that come at the end of the school year. So we're all buckled up for that. And I know Ellen went quickly, the teacher initiative on the school day. We're excited to think about that. Getting those kids back in your class for the athletics is such a continuous problem that we've really had a hard time solving and we're excited to have some potential movement that may, it's always good when somebody comes up with a solution to something that's been kind of sticky. So there's a lot of exciting stuff going.
Thank you.
I use less than my five minutes.
And I do, too. That's team support.
I'm just making sure there's no questions.
Oh, does anybody have questions for me? Yeah. Yeah, I know, as a matter of fact, some people don't know me. Yeah, I've been here. Should I give a little introduction?
Yes, you should.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. I teach, I've been here since 2008. This is my 11th year here at AMSA. This is my second go-around as the faculty rep. I was a couple of years ago the faculty rep and I served two terms before Brianna and before Tom. I teach AP Government and AP Macroeconomics right now and Chorus. I was excited to have Roger came to see my Chorus class today. And I coached the Quiz Bowl team and the Acapella Club and just generally all around involved in stuff, I guess.
Are we going to have a bankroll saying, you know, the beginning of the report?
We might. That's an uncontrollable little thing I have going on. If I have an idea, it just comes out in song.
Well, welcome back and promote your future contributions.
Thanks for having me back.
Thank you. Jill?
So I have a question for Ellen. Do you put your slides on the website? Do you think that's something the parents would be interested in? If they don't watch the whole board meeting, they might just look at your slides.
Yeah, I actually just figured out how to share them with all the staff today, so I just shared much with them. And we can put it on the website. Also, the video, Mike Finkel had taken my section from last month.
The report that's posted each one.
Yeah. And he's put that on Facebook also, too, the video.
Yeah, because I just think if the parents saw just that, be a good update.
So maybe, Mike, we could take.
Okay. Yeah, I know you got things covered. I thought I'd ask. So my only update is that the PTO got three people interested in the parent rep that they plan on interviewing. I was talking with Julie Young today and we still need to schedule when the interviews will take place, but soon, and we'll definitely have a rep by next meeting.
Thank you. Questions for Jill?
Do you know how the PTO is doing staffing the after-prom?
I don't. Last meeting I was at, they were still asking for volunteers.
They sent out a note today.
Yeah, they did today.
They did. I was wondering how desperate their levels were.
But they didn't seem too, too desperate at the last meeting, but I can check. I'll check in with them.
I was worried that there's a chance that there's not enough staff, that it can't come together.
It sounds like it's going to go.
Good.
No, they always get up.
Yeah, they'll figure it out. Okay, good.
Other questions for Jill? Kristen, finance and audit?
Finance and audit. So the finance committee met on Tuesday to review the proposed budget and we went through quite a bit of detail. We met for several hours actually going through the detail to get an understanding of what made up the proposal. And we have, we gave some to-dos back to the staff, so they're going to go back and look at it. We want to, we should probably schedule a time and some deadlines. We didn't really get to that when we were leaving, so.
We got that.
We got that.
Well, we can, we can have, as part of the, when you're done, we wanted to discuss logistics to get to a budget.
Yep. So we did not review the monthly financials because the team was working on the budget the whole time, so we'll have those in May as well. We'll have a couple of months to catch up on. The only other notable thing to mention is last month, we had taken to the bank the increase from DCE in the tuition, but that was reversed in an update that came out last week. So unless that reverses, again, it was a decrease to what we thought the expected upside was going to be this year, about $3-ish, $1,000, I think, off the top of my head, without the exact numbers. We don't know whether or not that was included in the proposal for the 2019. We just, they gave a proposal that was included in the budget so far, but was also, Leanna was expecting another update in the near term on the revenue side, which really drives the whole budget.
So we wanted to discuss, sort of plan out the, sort of the series of events that we need to, steps we need to discuss, events, steps we need to take as far as how to get to have any budget for approval in the May board meeting. Ellen and I had talked and I mean, we had sort of, we had sort of looked at calendars already, as far as dates that were already in conflict and.
Yeah, we're proposing some change of dates. Is that going to be under your governance?
Well, we can, why don't we talk about all the, all the dates, but we can start off with the finance one because that's sort of driving a lot of, a lot of things.
Okay. Due to some conflicting items that are coming up for May, we need to move the governance committee meeting up. And so that means that we need to have the budget done and through finance before the governance, before the finance committee meeting. Finance, we're proposing, gets moved to the 6th of May, which would mean that Leanna and Anders and I would have a budget ready to, with the revisions for May 1st. And we're asking that Kristen and Leanna are able to get together and review that by May 3rd, so it's ready to go to finance in the, in more or less proposed condition for the 6th of May.
Yeah, I'm out, Steve. I'm out next week of business, so I won't be here. That is next week.
Yeah, the next week.
The week, the week, yeah, that's next week.
But it's the, but it doesn't have to be before the governance meeting.
No, they.
I'm sorry, it has to go to the, to finance.
Yeah, finance.
On the 6th, which she's proposing for the 6th.
So does.
Couldn't it be the 13th or the 20th?
Not if, if Roger's going to be there.
Why don't?
Say that again?
I'm going to be unavailable from the 14th to the 27th, but I don't, I don't think that I have to be involved. So I think it's more important that we are.
So when, when the next meeting is the 23rd, right?
Right.
Well, I'd like to, so maybe, maybe we'll start, work backwards. I'd like to see to the board whether or not we can move the board meeting from the 23rd to the 30th.
I may not be available.
Is that the long weekend? When is the holiday, the 27th?
No, the 27th.
No, 27th.
The 27th is the holiday.
It's the Thursday after the long weekend. So the 30th, okay. And so that gives us one, two, three, four weeks.
Well, it has to go to finance first.
Right, but let's, let's work with one thing. So there's two options for the board meeting. The board, one option would be to continue on the, on the 23rd. The second option would be to move to the 30th.
We have one issue, and that is that if we're going to do something with that schedule, that one is June 1, has to be before June 1. Yeah, we're aware of that. It's definitely a consideration.
Yeah.
Right. So the issue that Sarah's talking to is that if we wish to adjust the school day number of hours that school operates, we would have to have a board approval before June 1st. So a constraint on the far end is having, having a board meeting before then.
If we have the board meeting on the 23rd, someone else wouldn't be here.
Right.
If we put it on the 23rd, it can't be at this location, is that what you're saying?
No, no, I personally have, there's two reasons. Firstly, I have a conflict on the, on the 23rd as well as providing, in addition to my own personal hopes, is that by giving one more week, we give another week for the budget to stabilize so that, but I think, so first I would see this, other people here who is not available on the 30th. Good. Good. So Pauline is the only one who has a challenge on that date.
Well, I'm out of town, so it's not even like I can't make, I am like literally gone, so.
It's, in desperation, is remote, remote participation an option or no?
I think I will be on a plane.
Okay, yeah. I would take that as a no.
We could shoot for the 9th, which gives people a little bit more time in administration to work on the budget.
At the moment, governance is, no, I'm sorry, May.
The 14th.
Do you mean the 9th? It's a Thursday?
Yeah, it's, yeah, one of the 14th, is that what you're thinking? I'm sorry, the 7th?
It could, it could be the, it could be the 7th or the 14th in my world.
Do I start?
Are you saying the 9th is not working for you?
No, I'm, I'm out of state on the 9th.
Oh, okay.
So Tuesday, the 7th, should we turn it down? Yeah, like I have another deadline that day.
Could you do the, like, the 13th? Because finance is usually on Monday. I mean, actually, I don't know why.
Tuesdays.
Well, it's on Tuesdays.
Finance is Tuesdays.
So the 7th works for me.
Which one works for you?
The 7th is fine.
No, if, does that give you enough time to revise the budget? I think that's the bigger.
We're going to stop meeting on tomorrow and then into next week, and I think as long as we have that time, that gives us.
One week, it's one week only. Do you want to tentatively set the 7th and then move it to the 14th if necessary?
Or we can just call it for the 14th?
It's your call.
Let's go for the 14th. Is that where Fiji?
14th's fine.
And we will, so we'll review it.
We can review ahead of that. You want to do that?
I think that that's, that's the key there. If we have it done and ready for your review by the 7th, would you be able to meet with Leanna, get to the 7th or the 14th to review it?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so we will have it to you.
Yeah, yeah.
We will have it to you by the 7th.
Okay.
And you will meet with Leanna prior, by the 13th.
Yeah.
So that we're ready to approve it on the finance.
Is this definitely set then, May 14th and it's a 5:00 PM because it's early, right, the budget, or will it be later?
We have been doing, we've been doing 5:30.
5:30, but I think this meeting.
The budget usually is earlier.
So we did it at 5, but we, I can go either way.
We can, let's shoot for 5.
5.
Start with that.
Does that work for you, Jane?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have 5:00 PM on the 14th and, and data to Kristen on the 7th.
And then a review by Kristen and Leanna before, on or before the 13th of May.
Very good.
I have board candidates that would like to attend, so I just want to make sure I give them the right date. And then when is the next governance? I'm sorry.
That's, that's the next, next item to schedule.
I'm just trying to jump the gun a little bit.
So we're, we, so last, we were not able to get governance quorum last meeting, so we met, we met informally, but we, we do have a significant, we're both looking for, in addition to the school day evaluation, we also are looking to move forward on board recruiting as well. So if, if it's not, I need to move it off the 14th in order to run the governance committee meeting. So clearly, we can't meet on the 7th, although I guess.
Why can't we meet on the 7th?
We could, we could also meet on the 7th.
Well, because we, we did finance on 14th, so you.
Oh, oh, right. We can still take the 7th.
Yeah.
All right, I was thinking, sorry. So I'd like to, I'd like to try for the 7th, seeing that we've been sticking on Tuesdays.
What's that, governance?
For governance.
I won't be here.
So.
That works for me.
I can do the 7th.
All right.
And time, 6?
Yeah, I think, so 6:00 PM on the 7th.
Okay.
That gets us one, two, three. Sarah, you're available? So we've got, we've got quorum.
I'm available too. I don't know if I count for any of your numbers.
No, you wouldn't.
You are not official then. Unless you're official by then.
You're welcome to attend as a, as a community member.
I just, I may need to be remote. That's just to make sure you have quorum.
Oh, that would, that creates a challenge for quorum.
So we just need to check that Chris or Ev, oh, just Chris. Who else? Is Chris on governance?
Chris and.
Ev.
And, no, Chris and Rick.
Oh, okay. Actually, is Chris on governance?
I guess I believe so. So it's, there's seven, Sarah, Roger.
He was on both.
Jill.
I mean, I was on two committees for a long time until quorum became a problem, so.
Rick, Roger, six, seven. Someone on the website, I believe it is Sarah, Roger, Jill, Pauline, Rick. Oops. One, two, three, four, five, six. Maybe it is Ev. Sorry.
It's Chris.
Yeah, Chris for sure, but.
Yeah, but there's, there's seven members and I missed, must be, Ev must be the 7th then.
I don't think so. I think Ev, Ev resigned.
Oh, okay. Chris, Rick, Roger, Sarah.
Jill, Raoul.
Jill, Raoul. Pauline.[1707.82] Pauline, okay, good.
That's seven.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes. And we have.
So we have to have four in person.
So, yeah. So Roger, Sarah, Pauline. So we wouldn't have quorum without Jill, if I'm counting right.
All right, we'd have to see if Chris or Rick.
Yeah. All right, well, I still think that we can work.
I'll try to be there.
Okay.
Try to get someone to cover a meeting.
Okay. I will let you know, but it sounds like, so we're going for 6:00 PM, which is our standard time.
Okay.
Unless 6:30 helps you, Jill? No? Earlier is better, so if people would like to get home. All right, so we have a plan to announce governance for the seventh at 6:00 PM.
Governance is seven.
So are we definitely moving the board meeting to the thirtieth?
That's, that's the next, that's the next discussion. I would say, at this point, I'd say, hold the date. I'm going to survey the board members who are not here to see which of those two dates is better for the board. So we have not made a decision on dates, so the only thing that I've heard so far among the people here is that Pauline is unavailable on the thirtieth. I should ask the opposite question. Who is unavailable on the twenty-third?
I'm currently the only conflict on the twenty-third.
Ellen, do you have any preference?
No. No, it's just if you're not going to be here, who's going to?
We have many, many people who can. Any other scheduling questions?
Can the board delegate the decision on the school day to the governance committee? And that might save some time, or?
No, the board cannot.
Can't do that, we have to.
Delegate, that is a board-level decision.
Yeah, okay.
But even if we were to vote on it on the thirtieth.
Yeah, they can submit the thirty-first.
Get it to the state the next day, for the next day.
You have to have the amendment written up and ready to go.
Oh, okay, got it. Okay.
Yeah, but that can all be prepared.
Yeah, it could all be prepared in advance.
I know it's the thirtieth, I mean, for June one.
Yeah.
June one's a Saturday.
Right. So the question is going to be, how long would the state take to review that?
Not long, we could have it by June.
Oh, really? Oh, okay, okay. Because I'm thinking you would need to let everybody know.
Well, that's the thing, you have to.
Okay.
So it's limiting time.
Yeah. So for that context, the twenty-third or thirtieth doesn't matter, right? Because either way.
So Sarah, you're saying, Sarah, you're saying that.
I know that you spoke with someone at the state today, and they know the meeting is the twenty-third, so they were poised, the decision wasn't made until the end of the year, expecting the twenty-fourth, but if this is changed, I don't know if that would be an issue.
A problem.
For the whole hall.
All right, so if you can, if you can call and let me know if that's an option.
The concern is, if it passes, then it's letting the community know and giving.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Right, well, either, I think either of those dates, we have, we have the community communication challenge. I think the question is, do we have a, if we were to approve on the thirtieth, does that give us enough time to get the paperwork to the state before their deadline? I think that's the question at hand.
I'll find out if there are circumstances that they may be able to accept.
Yes, and if you could get, I think as part of that, if you can get the last possible date, that may help us derive the decision, but I think the two dates in question are the twenty-third and thirtieth for our meeting.
Roger, you're going to reach out to the rest of the board members?
Yes, so my action item is to reach out to the rest of the board members, and then once we have a date set, I will reach out to everybody and inform the group as to what the decision is. I'll be waiting for input from other board members as well as from Sarah. Other scheduling questions? Now that we've gone through that detour, I'd like to pass the baton to Mark Vidal to talk about the development in the annual giving campaign.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It's an exciting time of year when we talk about giving money to a great cause. In your packet, before I get into the slides, on your packet, there's an awesome brochure. We're not sure if you have seen these yet. This was produced by our communications extraordinaire, Mr. Finkel. And this is a, it's somewhat genetic, but we can put inserts, you know, like I've turned on having an insert that will talk to corporations and so forth. So it's a, we finally have, I used to kid around with Mike, and I said, when I used to go to companies, I was the dog, but I didn't have the show, because we really didn't have a brochure that I felt confident and that really promoted the way we are. So this is something that is very positive, and it's a nice tool to be able to break the ice, but at least speaking from going into corporations, it's nice to have. On the, on top of that, on the right side of your packet, is a letter that is written by our executive director, our executive director interim and the president, I mean, chair of the trustees, asking you, as a trustee, to consider a gift to our annual appeal, and the directions on which to do so. Last year, we had a hundred percent, thank you, last year, a hundred percent of our trustees gave to our annual appeal, and I think that, no, I don't think, I very much would like to see that happen again. On the left side of the packet is a letter that went out, an old snail mail to all the families that we have now in our database, in our donor perfect database. And then this year, last year, we had parents writing letters from each of the four towns, and this year, we decided to have our seniors. And they're, and they, I almost have to like get them, all right, I only need three more, all right? Because a lot of the seniors want to help us raise money. So one is, that I included went out just yesterday, and it's already had a positive effect. And just this morning, we raised over a thousand dollars, and just this morning, and I suspect when I go on tomorrow morning, people will get home, see John's letter, and want to give as well. What have we done so far? Well, this letter, that's on the left side, was mailed to all AMSA families. We've updated our website, and plus photos updated. If you go to our website, right at the very top, there's a, the main toolbar now has donate right on it, so you can't really miss it. And if you happen to miss it, you just go halfway down the website, main page, and it says donate to the annual appeal too, so that's very, very easy. Mike has already, Mike Finkel's already started to include it in our weekly updates. John, as happened already, John Williams, outstanding student, a kid, not a kid any longer, he soon will be a cadet at the Air Force Academy, sent out this wonderful letter, and we hope to have more. We have a thermometer that was made by our students up in front of the upper school. Right now, we're, how much for, I can't remember, but where we're at, we have already raised.
Was that ten thousand?
How much?
Ten thousand.
A little, yeah, I think it's a little over, I think we're closer to twelve, not today, after today, but we'll go over that in a second. And then, like I said, seeking one hundred percent board involvement for our annual appeal. Some additional strategies, we'd like to continue having a reminder in our weekly updates. We will have three more letters from twelfth grade students. I'm trying to get two male students, two female students, and then from, you know, from different towns, John was from Lancaster, which isn't, you know, Williams might be the only family from Lancaster, but we'll definitely have a student from Hudson and Marlborough and, you know, one of the other remaining towns. We're going to, last year, the single best mode of generating revenue was our telethon, so we will have a telethon again. We will have, the way we do it is we just have student volunteers come in, typically from the leaders of tomorrow. They come in, they each grab an office, they have a script to kind of follow, and they call, they just basically go off a list of families that we have who have not yet given to the annual appeal. We also sent out letters to just, to our main vendors, those vendors that we purchase things on a regular basis. And then, this was something that Chris came up with, but I thought was a nice idea, that, you know, of having board and executive director thank you calls for our large donors. We've already had, we just received, one parent just gave us a thousand dollar gift just two days ago. So if we have more, you know, larger gifts, because those are the families, I think, that we, when we begin a capital campaign, those might be the families that we would like to reach out and touch again. This is kind of a breakdown, so we're right now, we're a little over twelve thousand dollars as of two o'clock this afternoon. You can see, you know, right now, we only have fifty out of seven hundred and fifty families who have contributed. You know, last year, we had, right now, and this isn't up there, but if you looked at donations per family, the number is up this year. It seems like almost every donation we get is at least a hundred dollars, where last year, we were getting a lot of twenty-five dollars and a lot of fifty dollars. Seems like almost all the, when I go onto donor perfect, it seems like the vast majority of them are a hundred dollar plus. So that's kind of nice.
Someone really donated eighteen cents.
Sometimes people donate, like, for the class, like, if you have a kid in the class of twenty-eighteen.
Twenty-eighteen, yeah.
Do you know what I mean?
I don't know, sometimes it's a crazy, they deal with like benevolity and these other companies that do matching gifts.
Oh, okay, okay.
Companies and its fees associated with that.
It means like a percentage, oh, okay.
So, yeah, so we, we have received a couple of matching gifts already, and I anticipate it's a little up. Are there any questions? At all? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe's on it, it's, it went on the web.
Every time I get one of these, I'm like, what?
Anything else for development? Chris was unable to attend tonight, so he said that Mark Vidal's report would be the development report. Education?
Yes, so I think Ellen and I are coordinating our updates without even knowing it, but at the April education committee meeting, our topic of conversation was internships, and we actually had Mark Vidal join us along with two students to discuss their internships and sort of how they went about getting them, and what we can do to further enhance internships going down the road. So Sahana Sewell, who was one of the Sinovian interns, as well as a junior, Erica Meredith, who was on the science night, she also joined us to talk about, she's going to be interning at Boston Children's Hospital this summer, and so she came in to talk, I actually had met her at the, when they unveiled the microscope, and I liked her story, because a lot of times, I think people automatically assume that internships are acquired through connections, that sort of thing. She literally cold-called Harvard professors with an email blast, and that's how she got her internship. So we really want to make sure that students are aware of different avenues for getting an internship. So one of the things that we're going to be looking to do is, with the help of Mr. Vidal, is create a page on the website, so that students can go out, and it's not always a push from Mr. Vidal, but students can go out and pull information about internships. And so, and one of the things that we realized as we were talking about it, is the first thing students need when thinking about an internship is a resume. And so we talked to Mr. Noraki and Ms. Murphy about hosting, maybe on a half-day next year, hosting a resume workshop in the afternoon for students who are interested in developing a resume and may have never done so, most people haven't. And so that would allow them to get some tips on writing a resume. We could also get volunteers, and I'm talking from the parent community, there is enough people who have that background, that we could get parent volunteers who would be willing to review resumes and maybe give input. Another thing that Mr. Vidal has had, and some other teachers have had, parent volunteers come in and do interviews, so that students can get comfortable with doing an interview. So these are all some ideas that we've started to come up with, and really also, and actually Ms. Murphy brought this up, and a couple of us talked about it, we also need to look to expand internships outside of just science, where they've typically been, you know, been mostly identified to include other academic areas, so that was one thing that we looked to do. So we're hoping to have sort of a one-pager of, I don't want to call it best practices, but at least good practices to begin with on, for students, if they are interested in seeking an internship. And Sahana and Erica definitely gave us some good tips on things to think about, so we'll be doing that, we'll be working on that probably in the May timeframe. The second update is just around trustees' day, which was today. We had eighteen teachers who volunteered to share their class time with the trustees today, and there were thirty different classes that we were, that were available to be observed. And first and foremost, I want to thank those teachers who welcomed us into their classrooms and shared the tools and techniques that they use to educate the students of AMSA. I also want to thank, excuse me, Lynn McCluskey, Linda Edwards, and Sandy Pail for assisting with logistics. We could not have pulled it off without them. We had four trustees and one member of the education committee who were able to attend the sessions today. So all in all, I think it was, it definitely was a good day, and we'll have to, you know, look and see if it's something that we can continue next year, but I do just want to thank all of those who participated today. And that's it for education.
Can I say four things about trustees?
Yes.
And I wanted to stay the whole day, but I only stayed for two periods, I'm splitting in half, so I went to four classes. So I'm going to say four things that I saw. I saw a teacher use something, a technique that he saw in another school, not only in another school, but in another country.
Yeah.
I saw the, a hint of joy in the teacher's face in the moment where the students caught something and got something of what they were doing, that it was, you know, you have to be looking at his face and know that he realized that they got it, and that brought him joy, just from looking at his face. I saw a great use of a prop, of a little jar of sand from the beaches in Normandy.
Yeah.
I saw hands-on activity for explaining and driving a computational concept that gets to the concept and the fundamental without using technology in a computer class. So just to tell you in two periods, four things that I saw that, you know, I wanted to stay the whole day, so I wish I could.
And that's why we work here.
Yeah, I just want to add, I think that, and this is something I'd like to do myself, I think we can do a better job of letting teachers know really what the purpose of the trustees' day. I think sort of, this is such a great trust-building, bridge-building day, just, you know, the board meets here and makes decisions about the school, and the more information you can have about how our day goes, what our kids are like, what our teachers are doing, what it looks like to have a uniform in place, what it looks like to have bells times and kids in the hallway, and I think sometimes these really little detail practicals, practical details, we forget that you don't sort of speak our language if you're not here all the time. And let teachers know that the purpose of the day is to get the board to understand some of these really practical informational aspects, so that everybody has a better understanding of everybody's role in this process that we have together of running this school. Sometimes teachers are territorial about our classrooms, like, ooh, why are they coming to my classroom? Why are they spying on me? Why, right? And we, as much as we can break that down as possible, I think it's such a great opportunity. I'm so glad you guys are coming to our classrooms.
And I have to confess, in my case, it's completely selfish, I just enjoy being in the classroom.
Yeah, and to your point, I did have that interaction with one of the teachers specifically around technology and the use of the Google Chrome in the classroom, and how the students are able to interact with each other and work together, collaborate, without having to, you know, do it on paper, or, you know, sit together, they're just able to work within the classroom. So I think that was definitely very helpful to hear, and I think that, to me, is what the board really needs to see and hear, because that's an area where we can impact. Yeah, like, we're asking you to vote on our budget, on getting us Google Chromebook cards, and to see how we actually use these tools, I think is so essential. And also, I had somebody come to my chorus class for the first time, that was exciting. Nobody ever comes to chorus.
She has been talking about it.
Everyone comes to see Gov. class, but no one comes to chorus.
Chorus, chorus was great. I was very, very impressed at the level, the level of chorus that was being taught, it's something that, where it's a half, it's a half-credit class, so you only have the students.
Every other day.
Every other day, and it's just amazing. Thank you for.
Thanks for coming to see us.
I have a comment about the.
I have a comment about the, with the students putting together their resumes. I have a recollection, which could be totally wrong, that my older daughter, who graduated in 2016, learned how to put together a resume from people from Guidance.
Yeah, it's in Naviance, there is a program where they can, they can put it in. They do work on it during Senior SEM.
Okay, maybe that's what it is. So I mean, maybe someone from Guidance.
It depends upon how busy the kids are and which time they put into it.
Right, okay, but I was just.
And we had, we came up with that from student input. So we have the four students that are on, that are on the Education Committee, as well as the two who came in to talk about their internships, and all of them pretty much said the same thing, that they really needed that extra training.
It's more practical.
That's sort of how we came up with the idea of, you know, we have a number of people who've worked in the HR field or recruiting, and we could easily pull together a resume-writing workshop and do it on a half-day.
I think there was also feedback too, that if they're waiting for Senior SEM, then they're missing out on earlier.
Exactly.
Right, right. If they're a junior or something, they're not getting that, so that's.
Right, right. So, and one of the other points was, they need to start looking earlier in the year. So if they want to do a, an internship over the summer, they need to be looking last fall. So that was, that was some of the other feedback that we got. So they really need to have this information and a resume put together earlier.
Well, another question for you regarding internships. First, I think it's fantastic that we're working on this. Was there any thought, discussion of looking for opportunities for alumni internships?
Yes, and actually, I think that we definitely said that there may be, you know, because obviously a lot of the companies might not be interested in the high school students, but certainly passing along the opportunities that come along for the alumni makes a lot of sense as well.
Yeah, I think it'd be great to be a resource center or something.
Yep, absolutely.
That would be focused on the alumni.
We also talked about the fact that it might not be going and working at a company where it might be more, as Mr. Vidal was talking about, project-based, so actually doing projects within the school that they're then bringing back to the, to the companies.
We actually have a student who's doing a project for the school this summer as a project for college.
Anything else? Other questions for education? Thank you, Liz. For governance, I have three, three topics to discuss. First, so three topics are board recruiting, surveys, and the board calendar. So I'll just start at, start at the beginning. We definitely, we have a significant challenge facing the board coming up as far as, we have significant turnover occurring on the board at the end of June. We are looking that we are likely going to be losing five board members. Most of them are planned retirements, but Pauline has served seven years, I believe, and thank you for all your service and guidance. Chris, who's started, Chris and Ev, who started into their second term, volunteered an extra year going beyond their first year, but were, they're, again, retiring, retiring and thanking for their service. Lucy has got the fantastic new job and is unable to make the commitment as a board member. And all of these people I hope to recruit to the Board Advisory Council. And the fifth is Rick Kamal, who is unable to make the commitment at level of board member, and we have not, we have not been able to contribute at the board level since the January meeting, and I think it's, the transition is clearly happening, it's a question of when, not if. So that last one, it's something we'll discuss in governance, but, you know, as a board, we are, we are down five. We are up one. Jill is volunteered to take on the role as a full-time trustee, and that is in process. And we also have a couple of candidates that are in the queue.
We have two candidates that are moving through the queue pretty.
Right, so.
Well.
So that's minus five, plus three. So we're, we're down, yeah, optimistically, if both of the candidates succeed, we're still down two, two board members. So I would definitely encourage everybody to look at their friends' networks, continue to make recommendations either to join a committee, join the board, and think we'll, so I guess I'll open it up to the board for additional thoughts and ideas as two things we can do to recruit, recruit additional trustees.
Can I ask, if I wanted to recruit somebody, what's the sales pitch? What do you get out of it?
Did we write that down?
We have a.
Do we have something like that that I could pass on to somebody?
Yes, so.
I mean, I know you don't get paid, I know you get pizza occasionally, but I was wondering if there was anything more.
So, yeah, there's a lot of reasons not to do it. No, there's, that's why I think it's actually really important to have that pitch go out.
Yeah, so we have a, we have a community letter that we've sent out, I can send it to.
Yeah, but that'd be taken out. So I think that needs to go out to at least people on this board, so they know.
Yeah, and I believe that there is the joining the board. Link.
Yeah, but that doesn't give you the reasons why.
Right, the reasons why.
It's referenced in the letter too. So if you're really interested, you can go online and check that out.
Right, but I think there, I'll have to look for that document, so I'll take, take that to the.
I was thinking of someone, and I was like, well, I'll talk to her, and then I'm like, oh, actually, I don't want to talk to her until I know what to say.
Right.
I'm like, do you want to come? I'll actually, so I need the sales pitch.
Right.
You can send them to us with a sales pitch too.
Well, you have a good sales pitch.
I mean, I know what I get out of it, but I think if you're asking somebody to kind of join your organization and volunteer hours like that.
It also makes sense that we're speaking with one voice and that we're all, you know, we all have the same story.
Why would someone say yes? That's what I need an answer to.
You know, actually, the people that I've talked to, it's a fairly easy ask. You know, you talk about what a great school it is and how much you love it, and why it's a special place, and then say, we're looking for volunteers. We've got people leaving, you know, rolling off of the board, we're looking for replacements. I think you are an awesome person who has, you know, all kinds of attributes that would be able to contribute to our community. Would you like to come down and talk to Ellen and Anders, and we'll take them for a tour, and we'll, we'll spend time talking to them and answering their questions, and it's, it's worked, it's worked.
She'll get a little razzle-b陣.
School speaks for itself.
Yeah.
When they come in to the kids.
Personally, I think it's for making, being able to make a difference in the community and in education in particular. But I do think, you know, we, we want to fill the board with high-quality individuals, so we're not, just because we have openings, you know, optimistically, we're down two slots, I'm not looking to fill them just to create warm bodies. If anything, that's the worst possible fit, because we have challenges with, you know, we're looking for people who can help direct us, help us reach our goals. And if we, people who are not here make it a challenge for quorum and are not contributing to that success. So we have, we have a well-designed and crafted.
No, and the process is really good.
The process is well.
I think the challenge has always been, when you get those people, they're really busy, and they travel, and it's, it's tough, right, to get people to say they're going to commit to at least two evenings a month, because it's board meeting and a committee meeting every month. So that's really actually where it gets kind of hard. And most of them, they can do it if they plan ahead. Or if they just need to be able to plan ahead.
Yeah, but that is a challenge, the, being able to make the commitment to two, to two meetings a month and the preparation time for each of those meetings. It is a sig.
That's the, that's the big struggle.
All of us here know that it is a significant commitment of time, and we want to make sure that we are sharing that, being very upfront, that that is, it is a significant commitment, and we.
When people fall out through the process, that's usually the reason.
The time commitment.
Yeah.
It's usually not lack of interest.
So if, if there are candidates identified, please, please send the resumes to Pauline and myself, and we will escort them through the process.
Do we want to take an action to share that letter that we had put together with what's in it for?
We'll share that draft of that paragraph. I will take that.
You will?
Yeah.
Thank you, Pauline. So that'll be shared with the board.
I'll send it to the board, yeah, yeah. There's sort of excerpt on the what's in it for me.
Yeah.
Like potential what's in it for me for board members, yeah.
So you're going to add that, or you're going to?
No, no, I'm just going to share it so that, like Jess would have. People would have that in their heads as just additional, you know, why you'd be doing, what else you could get out of it, besides just, you know, actually having impact, which they, that's never the issue. So it's, there was, there was some thought given into why else you might want to do it, but some of those things, actually, that Mike Glass brought up a long time ago, or, you know.
But I think we took that out of the final version.
Right, it was out of the final version, but it's in a penultimate version.
Okay.
So I'll send that.
So you'll get both.
Nice use of the word penultimate there, Pauline.
Also, also, I think one of the items that Ellen and I were talking about briefly is to, I talked, sorry, I'll sit back. So we initially sent out the letter to the community asking for assistance. It was sent, and we didn't get any responses at all back. It was sent as an attachment to an email rather than being in-line text. So I'd like to suggest that we resend the letter, but this time as, as in-line text. And any other ideas that Mr. Finkel would have to make it, make it more visible.
Could you do that, Lars?
Is there a sense of, I feel like when I was on the board before, there was a sense that we wanted the board 50% parents, 50% not. Is that still a thing? Are we still recruiting on?
Roughly 50/50.
That is our aim. Our, 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 my first, our, our looking first for quality board members, ideally at a roughly 50, 50/50 ratio of parents and non-parents. And also looking for quartals and other things, but.
But the quality board member kind of.
Quality board member is, is first.
There's a random chance that I can add to that number in two years.
That's right. We've had that happen before.
Yeah.
Board members who are parents who became non-parents.
Yeah. We've had that in both directions today. Wish you the, wish you the best of luck.
In another few weeks, I'm a non-parent. I should have mentioned that, I also have two children. For another few weeks.
All right, other thoughts on, on board recruiting at this point? All right, surveys, I'd like to.
Yeah, so I'll give a quick update.
No, sir. So we have two things we're going to talk about, surveys. We're going to first talk about the falls, the fall survey from fall of 2018, and also about the spring survey for, basically, the spring survey for 2019, i.e. now.
Right. So the fall survey was reviewed, the PDF results are published on the website, and I don't remember when they were published.
Today.
Oh, today, okay, that's why.
I think I put them out today.
That's why, because I checked today, it's like, oh, I thought they weren't, but it's okay, good. Because, and that's completely, you know, my fault on not following through with the timeline we had, because we did get the results from Panorama in December, mid-December, and where the next step was to review the comments, because we have to redact the comments before updating and sharing those. And that was completely, you know, we dropped it all, I dropped it all. But that also means we didn't start the process for the spring survey. So now we have the survey, the fall survey, we haven't discussed it in board meetings, so maybe that's something we should add to the next, just to share some of those results. And by then, we'll have the comments already redacted and shared as we usually share. I reached out to Panorama today about the timeline for the spring survey, which last year, by this time, we had already deployed. The good news is that if we were, unless somebody has any opinions otherwise, the plan was to execute the same survey again. So there's no, we don't need to go back and rethink the questions or anything like that. I know that when we discussed back then, we said there were portions of the questions that we wanted to make them, like, you know, topics for the year, but again, unless anybody thinks otherwise, we don't think that that's necessary. So any comments about that before we say, yes, let's move on and try to put the timeline together and try to execute as quickly as possible?
I have just one comment on the survey results, the text. We had a conversation during governance about who receives the unredacted comments. And I believe it was decided at the Governance Committee meeting that Anders and I would receive the unredacted comments from the principal.
No, I think I got that wrong. That it was still, the concern was that it was supposed to be at least at one level going through, so that everyone felt, so that people would feel comfortable saying whatever they wanted.
Okay, so never do we get, okay, so that changed then, am I allowed to say?
No, no, I think that's just where it ended up. I think I misunderstood, and then we had additional people speak, and then I was like, oh, yeah, that's right, that was the original reason, so that's where it came from.
Right. Maybe to clarify, there might be two levels of redaction.
Yes, there may be two levels of redaction.
There may be two levels.
Okay, maybe that's what it is.
You know, in the process going forward, I think part of, part of in our governance discussion was what, what, if first we need to document what our process is, and I could see that there could be a possibility of two levels of redaction. First, that, so that the teachers and parents can say whatever they wish, that we, that the board would be responsible for taking a first pass to remove, remove things that were felt to be removed, and then we also need a second pass after the principal, ED, and I guess it's just principal and ED, right?
Yeah.
And there, there may be teachers' names or other things that would need to be removed before it becomes a public document.
Public, but that they could see that, yeah.
Does that, does that seem to be?
That's correct. I think, I mean, I guess we could do it in two levels. I think that's helpful.
It would be a pass of course, for the board level.
Yeah, there's usually someone on the board that looks at the first pass, and I think we just didn't, we sort of forgot that piece.
Yeah, but we need, we need to communicate that approach to Panorama, because I think today they send it out to Lynn, and to, or at least one person of the task force. Or not send it out, but make it available through the link on there.
So the board owns the survey data.
Right.
And then the board would, somebody on the board would scrub that data of anything that could.
Be identifiable for individual teacher or parent.
Identified before the executive director sees it from, from a family member or a, or a faculty member.
Right, and so that first layer should be really quick, right? That first layer should happen as soon as the survey data comes out, right? Someone should look at it, and there's probably only one or two that would need to be redacted. Like if someone gives a very specific, in prior administrations, people would give very specific examples of interactions that happened to support, you know, what their concern was, and they wouldn't do that if they thought, if the complaint was about the ED and they wanted to give an example about it, they wouldn't say that if the ED was getting that. Because then the ED would know what the certain, you know, the circumstance was, and the fear was, of course, that there would be retaliation. So there should, there's one layer of, like, some board member would look at just removing those, like those that would be really identifiable to an individual, and then that should happen really fast, and then it should go to the ED and the principal.
So once, just, I don't know, if you want to scripturally say just one board member, I would say the task force.
Yeah, okay, the task force.
Even if it's one comment, you still have to read nine hundred comments.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you split it up.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it should be a task force, yeah.
Right.
But then the second layer is then, so then the ED and the principal get that, but the second layer is before it goes to the full board and becomes like a fully public document, that we then redact teacher names, right, and individual student names or parent names or anything else that may come up there. And the only thing that stays are sort of leadership names.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
But the first one, the first pass is to just clarify, like, if something was expressed that would make an individual identifiable. So it is two layers.
So could the.
Because that way, you at least still get the information with teachers.
Right, so the part of the goal is to get this information in the hands of the administration as fast as possible. So I'm thinking that in the second, in the second round of scrubbing, that actually the principal.
The administration could help, yeah.
Can help us, can help us in the, in the, in the second round of scrubbing.
Or like Lynn, right, for sure.
And Lynn as well.
Yeah. Because I think the first layer of scrubbing is easier and faster to do. I mean, you do have to read through nine hundred comments, but at least you're not, like, worrying about, you know, very little thing.
Right, right, you have many. Right, right, you have many less things. So, do we have agreement that, that this is?
We did agree we'd write this down.
Yeah, so I'm.
Did, did I agree?
No, I think that, I think, I believe Raul had, I'd sort of given that to you. That was the document.
Oh, because I wasn't there?
Oh, yeah, because you were.
Okay, so I will write down the policy. Oh, that's what you asked, right?
That's why, yeah, you're writing up the policy to document this, exactly the discussion here, so.
So I'll make, I'll go one step further. I'll document the process for kicking off and, like, the whole process for the survey. Not just the redaction stuff.
Right, right, the whole.
Yes, yes, that'll be good, that'd be good.
Document the whole process. So, I was looking for volunteers for the survey redaction.
For the fall one?
Oh.
For the spring? No, the fall one, I'll, I'll take care of that, it's not that big. I'm halfway done.
Okay, so, Raul, you, you have the, you have the fall one.
But the spring, yeah, I guess, is it the same task force that we disbanded, task force that we have to create again?
So we just disbanded.
So any volunteers for the survey? May I volunteer myself again?
I'm, I'm happy to volunteer, although I'm not sure if it's appropriate.
It would not be appropriate.
Right, okay.
No, you can't be on it.
Well, we have Brianna.
Brianna did some part of it, so she helped write the questions, yeah.
Oh, so the redact, you're, you're saying we have a redaction task force?
I'm looking for the, for the redaction task force.
I'll help you, I'll help you. We did it before.
So I'd like.
Yeah, I can do it too.
Yeah, we'll get the band back together.
I'm gonna volunteer for all the things I'm not allowed to do, so I look like I really wanna get involved, but then I don't actually do it.
Good, thank you.
That's like me.
So I get paid the big bucks, kiddos.
So I'd like to, so, no, three of them.
And Jill.
So we have.
So it's basically the same survey task force.
So we, I had a point, point, Raul, is, and Jill, to the survey redaction task force for the spring 2019 survey.
Do we agree we don't wanna change the questions? Are there any discussion, response on the question?
Okay, so, yeah, well, yes, we'll go back to that, that question. So the question front of the board now is, do we wish to keep the survey as is or change any of the questions?
I think for consistency purposes and being able to report year over year, I don't think we wanna make any big changes unless there's something specific that we need to, that we're looking to get at.
I agree.
Probably in the interest of time.
Especially in the interest of, of time.
Yeah, and they can turn it on right away.
And we did some good questions last time. We took a lot of time.
And there's so much time designed for those questions.
Yeah, so.
So, we have board consensus that we are gonna leave the survey as is, so the next step would be to talk about timing, as far as when, or is that just something we wish to delegate to the administration?
Well, I asked Panorama, I don't know what their constraints are, as far as, I mean, I'm assuming we wanna do as soon as possible, given that we're late compared to last year.
Yeah, and I think we wanna be able to report out at the June board meeting, so you probably, probably have to back up.
So I'd like to delegate, Raul, to work with the administration to run the survey and announce it, all those pieces, so that we can report out at the June board meeting.
We've already started talking about it, Raul, and Mike has still got field emails to announce it, so we get ready to work on your board.
I reached out to Panorama today, so I'll let you know when they respond.
Other questions, comments about surveys? All right, thank you. Last, last piece, and actually, may incorporate the survey into the bot calendar. I have, so the, there's two, in your, in your packet, there's two bot calendars. One, one says April 2019 draft, which is the candidate and the one that, that has lines through it, et cetera, and there is an existing, the existing one that says April 2019 is the current bot ideal calendar. And, there, there were, actually, most of it was minor changes that we did. There, there, so, the, the candidate proposals are, is we remove some of the student attrition and waitlist reports, because we felt that there were too many of them, and we felt that the waitlist and, the waitlist and, and retention is all under control. So we, we back, we backed some of those out. We moved the, well, maybe I'll just do it chronologically. So, the, we had a duplicate in October, so we fixed that. In the December-January timeframe, we added the, oh, wait, why, oh, well, this, this isn't quite, we, we actually did, did add the PSAT results, that was not in the original version. We, this year, we reported them this month, we're gonna move it back to December timeframe. Let's see, what else?
Right, there's no December meeting anymore.
Yeah, it's the early January one.
Yeah, I think we, we just, we just changed the, we, we expected it will only be a January meeting, but we, so we grouped all the things as being December slash January. And, that was about it. So we're just, just continuing to refine this document. I would think we should add in, now with the discussion about, about the surveys, we should, we should put the surveys into the bot calendar.
I think it's results from surveys.
Okay, so we have, we have.
Do you wanna add, like, preparing surveys or picking up?
We do have that, like, you see April as conduct survey?
We have the, we have the Aprils conducted and results in May. So I think we're.
So we're just among thought this year.
Yeah, so.
Do we have the past, what is it?
And the fall is October and November.
All right. So, yeah, so we, we just have to follow our calendar that, do we, do we want a survey prep in March? Just to, just to initiate the process?
Have the discussion.
Yeah, just so we don't lose track of that.
So we don't do this.
So, so candidate to add, to, for those to add, the survey discussion in, probably driven through governance in, in March.
You're calling it survey discussion?
Yeah, survey, survey discussion for the March meeting.
So should the December slash January merge with the January?
Well, so, so the, the January bullet is for the, is specifically, could be the, call it January strategic planning.
Got it, okay.
And then the December-January is that other meeting.
Early meeting.
Early meeting, which we typically have been running in early January. As we found that December is not, not a useful month for meeting.
I think we've done that two years, and it seems to work a lot better. We have worked this issue.
Yeah, I think that's a, been an improvement there. So other, other discussion? I think that since, since this is a official document, I'd actually like to take a vote to, I don't know whether we need a vote on it, but we might as well. You look puzzled, Pauline.
No, I was gonna, I, I, I'm not puzzled, I'm trying to suggest a change.
Oh, okay.
Because people don't understand what this means. It, we should call it, we, you and I know what this means, because we created it, you know, in 2012, but I think we should call it something other than ideal calendar. We should call it like.
Board calendar.
Topics or something, I mean, like, topics for the board, or like, board agenda, you know, sort of agenda, something. I just think the word ideal is not.
Yeah, it's.
It's not, it's not descriptive for what it.
It's a board topic calendar.
It really is board topic calendar, right? That's what it is.
Yeah, that's probably.
Because of course there's other things as well, but sort of like the things that we have to do every year, we need to slate. And so then, if it can't be done in October, it should automatically go in November, right? So it automatically rolls over. So that's all I wanted to change.
Yes, I think.
So what are you going to name?
Board topic calendar.
Other, other suggestions for improvement?
I would add one more thing to the board topic calendar. Probably in May, April or May, I would suggest being the board calendar for the next year. Like the actual meetings for the following year. And that's probably a governance, right? May governance should, or April govern, it probably should be April. And this year will have to be May.
Did anyone ever talk about creating these for the committees themselves as well? That deep dives into them, because there's other work behind them. Has that ever come up to help be kind of a roadmap for committee?
That's a good idea, no.
Work as well? I'm just thinking, finance, you know, certainly, there's got a lot of things in here that we, we discuss and have to do, so.
Right.
Yeah, you could.
Like, you know, like, when the budget has happened, you know.
Even in more detail, right? Because we have review meetings, and we have a, you know, we, we review the audit report beforehand, and we, you know, we have other things that we should probably deep dive into more, than we have in the past.
No, I don't, we, we've never done it for committees, um, but.
We, yeah, yeah, I think that would be a great idea. I think it really would help the committees to sustain themselves, so.
Yeah, it comes a little bit more with us.
Yeah, that, I think.
Each committee should have their own calendar too.
Their committee topic calendar. Topic calendar, yeah, I guess, like that. Because it really does make a difference, because then you don't forget, because otherwise things get lost.
Forget to run the surveys.
Like, you forget to run the surveys, right?
Or just maintain, you know, and so we should have that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a fantastic idea. Sign, make that, I will pass that as an assignment to the committee chairs to put on their agenda.
So we can have the governance meeting dates in equal?
And so, govern.
Board meeting.
Governance would propose.
Board meeting dates for the following school year.
So schedule, schedule, yeah, schedule, uh, meeting dates. Schedule, schedule board and committee meeting dates.
For following school year.
For the following school year.
By the way, we're 15 minutes over.
Well, that's not bad.
Well, 15 minutes over this topic.
Yeah, the governance chair should.
Yeah, I heard you wrote that down.
The governance chair should do something about that. All right, I'd like to, at this point, close discussion on it and take a vote to approve the board topic calendar as amended.
A second? Oh, or I'll take, like, motion.
Yeah, Pauline and Kristen, all in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. I think this would be a good addition.
I need the chair like they have on $25,000 pyramid.
All right. Switching to chair business, so we, we did the, we did the April board retreat, we have, we, we need to discuss next steps in retrospective. There's a tremendous amount of information in the board retreat, I hope that you've had a chance to read it ahead of time. So, I think, my opinion, that we've got a couple, at least, at least two items coming out of the board meeting. One is, and I'll look for additional items, I'm not cutting it off at two, but I, do you have one doc, one challenge is to create a, given where we were at, to take the, our 80% vision statement and make it into a, the, a board vision statement. That's one, one item that's come out. The second major item is to come up with goals and metrics for, for the, for ourselves, for the whole community, from, you know, from goals and metrics. Those are the two major items that we were striving toward, and we made progress, but we didn't, we didn't, clearly, we didn't get there. I think we made, as Nan described it, we made as much progress as we could in, in the day. I think we had a great and lively discussion, as documented. So, are there other, other additional tasks beyond those two large tasks that we've, that I've identified? Okay, I think it sounds like a no. So I was thinking, and so now there's a question of the approach as to how do, how do we get there from here? And especially give, so, it would, I, I think it would be challenging to have, to start writing goals and metrics without the vision being complete.
Yeah.
So I'd like to start a discussion on, in regards to that. What are people's thoughts on how do we, how do we get there from here?
One suggestion could be that we do homework individually and submit ideas centrally to be reviewed around vision statements.
We're gonna channel Jean and say that we, those that haven't reviewed it recently should look at the charter document, because that is the vision. The charter.
The charter application document, yeah.
And also, so, I'm sorry, I agree with your statement that we have to clarify the vision to talk about the goals, but I'm not sure how we'll do that. So you're just suggesting that we think about it, and then we come back together to?
No, I was looking, I was, I was, I'm asking the board their thoughts on what the process should be, given our, we've identified two goals that we want to achieve. One is to have a vision statement, and, and then the second is to have goals and metrics for, tenure goals and metrics for the board, for the boards, our whole, for our community.
I think, by the time we would finish with Nan, she felt that we had had about, we had about 80% of the vision statement.
This appendix one, right?
Mm-hmm. And, and maybe putting a small task force together to, to kind of create the vision statement based on that page one of her document, along with all the other work that we did that day. And we worked straight through till, like, I think, 4:20 in the afternoon, and maybe put something together as a draft. And then create your, your goals based on that, that vision in support of the charter. I think we're close, we just don't have it put together.
What do we want the vision statement to look like?
Oh, I'm glad you asked that.
Because this is like, I get what this, I mean, I wasn't at this last meeting, but I get a lot of what is coming out here, right? The bullet points is great, of course, that's how I understand things, but a vision statement isn't gonna look like that. It's not gonna be bullet points, right? So what do we?
No, it's gonna be two or three sentences.
Do we want it to be paragraphs?
Not a par, I wouldn't even, I mean, two or three sentences, I don't think you want it to be much longer than that.
All right, I'll, I'll do it.
You want her to draft?
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll create the vision statement, and I'll create the goals. And I'll hand them out at the next meeting.
We need to do both?
I think Nan's vision was that it would be longer, honestly.
Oh, that it was longer?
So I think the board needs to have something clear, easily expressed. We speak with one voice to the community and to the administration. I don't think it's that hard, I think it's all in the charter.
The vision statement.
Yeah, the vision.
But based on all the things.
And I think, and I think how to measure it too is clear in the charter and easily expressed. I'm happy to do that, and, or have anyone join me, but they would like.
Well, I think it definitely needs to be a collaboration, in order, in order, but I, I know, so, yeah, so I think.
Or I'm happy to collaborate with anybody.
Right.
Or not.
One thing that Nan said when she was looking at the charters is, we've got a great mission statement, but our vision statement was like, in the charter is like one sentence, and it really wasn't. Her, her description is that it wasn't.
I happen to disagree with that perspective.
You think that the vision statement is clear?
Yeah, I think it's clear, so.
Except that it clearly isn't clear, because for 13 years, it was argued over and so. Except that it clearly isn't clear because for 13 years, it was argued over and so interpretation of it is unclear.
Okay.
And I don't think, and maybe I missed it, but I don't think there are metrics.
No, no, that's a different thing.
Right, but that's saying that the goals are not in the charter.
No, I'm not, I'm actually much more worried about creating a vision statement, right? Because it's just been-
Is it, is it possible to pull up what the vision statement in the charter is?
I don't know. I think Nan's thought, she, that was, that it was this big?
No, no. So the, the, the document that you see in front of you is just everybody's, everybody's vision statement pulled together. That's, all those bullets are somebody, somebody said that. So she, so all she did was collate together people's thoughts. So that's why, that's why it's huge.
Okay, okay, okay.
But her thought was if you pulled this all together, then you can come up with a vision.
So there's a section in the executive summary that says vision. And it starts by saying, "The mission of the academy will be accomplished by creating an educational model using an internationally recognized educational approach. At the center of the academy model is a highly structured curriculum consisting of continuous logically organized and interconnected multi-year courses."
That doesn't sound like anything.
That sounds interesting.
And it also doesn't sound anything like what's coming out of this here where all of the people have put their thoughts in. It sounds very different.
What did it mean by interna-, do you, do you know what she meant by internationally recognized?
A lot of she came from-
That's what I'm wondering. Or an international model, right? It was supposed to be based on a different model. Well, we've moved beyond that now because we're in our second decade, we're developing our own model, right? So a part of it is, we're not going to do it based on someone else's.
An international model is different than international recognition.
Yeah, I forgot what it said. I may have misheard. It was international recognition.
Internationally-
No, internationally recognized.
Internationally recognized educational approach. So if we create a new approach, we need to make sure it's internationally recognized.
Which was important to them at the time.
Right. Well, that actually is, I don't, I don't disagree with that sentiment, if that's what the sentiment is, but that means we're creating our whole own approach. Or was it meant to be, we'll take an internationally recognized approach that already exists and use that.
Right.
Which I think is what it meant, but I don't know because that is unclear. So I don't know which of those two it means.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, it is unclear, but I would, I would view it as if, I'm thinking of that it, we would base, well-
I thought it was based on-
Yeah, I was doing it as the based on to say that we would, that our, our series of classes at all is based on-
Some other curriculum.
European, Eastern European style-
It was based on that, yeah.
Curriculum was, was where, but it's not, we're not going, my, again, my opinion is that it wasn't the spirit to just copy and paste. It was to make it, use that as the basis for our design of our courses. Again, my opinion, I don't know, Jean, if you wanted to leap into that discussion or
I'm sorry?
Did you want to, we're sort of trying to read the tea leaves.
I don't think, I don't think we can, it would take a very long time at this meeting to discuss the nuances of what it is that's, the founder is meant by the words in the charter. I'm saying, I'm happy to give it a shot, to interpret it based on, you know, where we are today. Or not.
Is, can I ask, is it our goal as a board to make this vision statement, to take this retreat, what came out of the retreat, and are we trying to get closer to the charter? Why are we going back to the charter? Are we trying to update the charter? Are we trying to get us back to the charter?
So my understanding is what, where this all started is that we, we started creating 10-year goals. One of those goals was about metrics and how we wanted to be excellent in those metrics. And then we said, well, what are the metrics? And then we said, well, we don't know, let's figure it out. And that's where we started this whole process to determine the metrics. As the discussion unraveled, and correct, if I'm wrong, this is how it happened, we realized, well, we can't really discuss what excellence means and the metrics without a vision. Let's create a vision. So that's how the two goals are, create the vision and then bring the metrics, yeah, create the metrics.
I mean, traditionally, the mission, the mission is change, right? That mission is what it is. That's why we exist. The vision is like, where are we supposed to be in 10 years? Like, what is it that we're shooting for? That's sort of the idea.
Okay.
So we need, we needed that to get to our 10-year goals.
Right, exactly.
So the vision is where we'll be in 10 years, and then the metrics are how we're measuring how we're meeting that?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And in the retreat, when people were talking about what their 10-year vision is, for instance, the word international did not come up on anybody's word clouds, on no big pieces of paper on the wall did anybody use the word international. So I'm, I'm wondering why we're going to go to the charter's vision statement, Jean? That seemed to be the starting point that was important to you.
I think the intent of the founders, as expressed in the charter, is, I think, is brilliant.
Well, that's the charter. She talked about the vision statement.
Well, I'm saying their intent was brilliant. Now, we have to update the charter to, today, all right? And there are things which really aren't that applicable. I, I would like to see us all agree on and speak with a single voice as the board to the administration so that they have some guidance. And the community so that they know when they are sending their kids here what to expect that is clear, simple, and based upon the principles in the charter. Not the exact words in the charter. We can discuss the words forever. It's like the Bible, all right? You know, I mean-
Okay, good, now I hear you. Okay, great.
You know, I mean, there are people who run their life based on the Bible, some on the literal interpretation, but most on the principles. And that's how I think we should view the charter, all right? As the Bible, that we should interpret it in a way that makes sense for us today and is easily expressed by everyone in the community so that we know where we're headed in the context of limited resources. I mean, at this meeting, it was like, let's do everything, you know? We should be excellent at everything, okay? Well, I'm sorry, you try to be excellent at everything, you fail, all right? We have to focus on a few things, and I would focus on the brilliance of our founders in putting together the charter and their vision, and I would re-express it based on today.
Thanks. Now, I feel like I understand better where we're kind of going.
I think principles. Actually, you know, we did, two years ago, create that document with a statement of guiding principles, and there was a lot of work done then. And I feel like that document was never really finalized either. It kind of got to this stage, right? And then we had a bunch of operational issues. I wonder if having that document, because that was very much going through the charter application document and trying to pull things out. If we had that, and you probably were not on the board yet, so I don't think, so I don't, and you probably know, so.
I feel like that's when I left off, and I feel like, and I feel like I left for three years and I'm coming back in the same-
I know, exactly. No, it's true. You are. But that document was pulling all those aspects, and I think it was like two years' worth of work to get to that. And then we had, you know, different administration, and then we never sort of went back to it because the, you know, the goal was much more-
Does someone have it?
Yes, Chris.
I think Chris has it.
Chris, Chris, Chris has-
I actually think I may have it less, or Chris has the less.
I believe Chris has it, but I think we, I should, we should-
We probably just have it. So let's take that and marry it with this because then that pulls out a lot, when you said that with principles, it's something else, I mean, that's what we were trying to do, to pull out just, you know, what are those relevant principles, not the specific
All right, so one possibility to suggest is form, forming a task force to do two things. One would be to, to consolidate the guiding principles document and with this, to propose, with the outcomes being to propose a vision statement as well as a, how to take, to propose a draft vision statement and a process to turn it from a draft to a final, as far as-
So you give me that document.
Yeah, I do.
And I'll mark it up and criticize it.
Yeah, so I can be part of a, I can be part of a task force. I can't drive it, I'm just worried about my time, but if you can-
And this could be your vision for the future as you lead the board. Okay? Is that good?
That would be good.
All right.
Because I feel like, you know, we haven't resolved that facility thing. I feel like we have stable management now, however. It's about, it feels a lot of self.
All right, we have two people on the task force, I'll do the bulk of the work.
Okay, great.
How's that?
Ideally, I'd like to get a third member of the task force because I've found that odd numbers are very good for discussion.
I'm happy to help.
That would be great.
Great.
So I'd like to appoint a task force of Pauline, Jean, and-
Jess.
Jess, thank you. She was in her class earlier today. To take on the, the vision statement and deployment plan for the school.
Vision statement and deployment plan, okay.
So you wrote just a task force form at the end of that, of the April 6 meeting? There was a task force actually? They called it a subcommittee? It was just people volunteering if there were a subcommittee forum, but-
I think we sort of, I think at the end of the meeting, we had asked for people who wanted to work on a vision statement, but I think this, this discussion supersedes that.
Well, were there people that had volunteered themselves then that want to be part of this? Like Chris?
People who aren't at this meeting and then therefore deserve to be volunteered?
Like Sarah. Bush, or, did you want to be part? And I was, was on to. As long as Sarah is there, I'm, I'm comfortable.
Was there anyone else from the board?
I don't, I don't believe.
Where, what?
Was there other people from the board? No, I think we've got, I would like to add Sarah to the, to the committee. Would you accept that, Sarah? Very good. And ideally, well, I'll, we'll receive a report next month rather than giving you a date.
I'm going to try, I'm going to try to recruit Chris. Just tell him, yeah.
Yes.
Because that gives us five plus-
Yeah, if we can-
As a national board member.
Yes, if we can get-
He's been so involved in every piece of this, every time we've had something. And I'm pretty sure he's the one that has that statement, guiding principles, the latest draft.
So you'll get that.
I will try to recruit that from him and I will definitely send it to you. Probably over the weekend.
Okay, good.
And if you, if you find it, you may as well circulate it to the whole board.
Oh, yeah, I'll circulate it to the whole board. Okay.
All right.
Okay. I'm putting all my to-do list.
So given that, I think, unless there's thoughts on how, goals and objectives, I think I'd like to set that aside in the interest of time. I think we've gone to push this as far as we could at this meeting.
Yeah, I know.
All right, one quick administrative note. We, at the last meeting, we had, we had appointed Steve Temple as a member of the advisory council, but I messed up on process that there's actually a board vote required to appoint somebody to the admin, to the board advisory council. I had just done, I had done the nomination but did not call a board vote. So I'd like to call a board vote to nominate Steve, Steve Temple to the board advisory council.
So, question, do we, did we get like a background resume?
Yeah, there's a personal statement that was sent out quite some time ago.
Was there? I'm bad.
Yeah, it was, it was in the, it was in the last, in the last board meeting.
Is he the lawyer?
No, it, no, it-
I don't remember saying that.
He attended the January board, strategic planning meeting, was the last.
So you might not have met him.
He was like the other person who was there.
Yeah, I know, I'm just trying to picture a matter like, he's tall.
Taller.
I know, I need a, not a script.
Okay. There you go. All you needed. I remember.
It works, though.
Okay, I was, I was going to look for his resume and send it to you.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
So, other discussion? All in favor?
Was there a motion?
Oh, sorry. I, I had made the motion.
So Roger?
Oh, so I need, I guess I need a second.
Second.
So Roger, Roger Liz, all in favor?
I'm sure.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously?
The E D P L E.
Yes. Thank you. Meeting wrap-up. Agenda items for the May board meeting. So we had-
Survey, pulse survey review. 15 minutes.
So between now and the next meeting, you're going to have given out the survey and then you're going to do-
No, the pulse one, the call, which were published today.
I thought that seemed optimistic.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So that's the survey for next month's survey.
Survey, pulse, like, full, pulse survey.
It's not the full survey.
The pulse, yeah, whatever we want to call it. 15 minutes or much?
I think, I think, it sounds reasonable. Oh, yes, one other thing, I'm looking, also, since we're reaching close to the end of the year, and go back to chair business, I'd like to, after discussions with Pauline and Liz, I'd like to create a task force for the ED evaluations. The task force would be to evaluate both Anders and Ellen for this, for the school year or for the period that Ellen has been the interim ED. Pauline and Liz, would you like to volunteer for that?
Sure.
All right? Thank you very much for volunteering. It's a very important job of the board. Other agenda items for May.
What else are counted?
That's one, I was looking, looking at May, we don't-
Did Roger, this can be, the evaluation task, can be a May agenda?
No, no, that's, I just was appointing, I was appointing the task force of May and Liz.
You know, so the only problem is going to be that I'm going to be off the board in June, and usually that write-up occurs in July.
You can still write up the task force as a non-board member. You'd be reporting to governance.
You're not going anywhere yet. You're on the advisory board anyway. I tried. You're still on.
Yeah, so the only, the only other item I see in May that we probably will not get to, given all the other things, is the report on the board's self-assessment.
Or even doing the board's self-assessment.
That, that one is definitely probably a non-agenda item.
That's just not going to happen, it's true.
What, and the surveys, are we going to have the survey results?
I, I don't think, I doubt that we would have survey results. We might, it depends on, it depends on the schedule that you and Ellen work out, whether we would have the multiple choice survey results. Probably better to wait for June.
June, yeah.
Because that's a wrap-up thing, too.
Yeah, yeah, so for the June meeting, we will be, planning the June meeting to do the survey results for both the faculty and, and parents. All right, anything else for the May, May meeting? I mean, clearly, the biggest item in the May meeting will be the budget. How much time would you like for the budget discussion in May?
I think we should have a good 25 minutes. I think we should review it. I don't, I'm trying to recall last year's review, it felt lighter than I thought it, that I recall. I don't even remember the budget. Did you get into a lot of supporting schedules? I don't think there's any supporting schedules.
Usually don't at the board level, at the finance committee level, but not usually at the board level.
It's more of a blessing on the top. How are we doing?
It really gets worked through finance.
I think you could do less.
So we'll put it at 25.
I would put it at 25.
And if we get-
I'll lose that, so do your time.
We need to allot her more time.
Yes, we will allot more time for Ellen. Okay. Get it right.
Even 25 minutes.
25 minutes has proven not to be enough because we asked many interesting questions. More question time. All right, so- All right, so meeting effectiveness, effectiveness and evaluation. Thoughts from the board as far as the meeting. I'll, I'll start off by saying we started 10 minutes late because it was my fault. So we do need to.
That doesn't count.
Well, no, no, I mean, starting on time would be, would be good.
Start on time, end on time. A great leader once taught me that.
And add, add more time for, more time for Q and A for, for Ellen's report.
Yeah, more for Ellen and you needed more time for governance, so.
Yeah.
If you have three things on the agenda, like 10 minutes each maybe. But we could probably spend less time discussing rescheduling stuff. I don't know, that just seemed to take a while.
Am I making this up, that somebody asked for all the votes to happen at the beginning of the?
Yes, that was me. And I'll, I'll repeat that request.
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to see on the agenda, what we have to vote on right up front, at least to know that. And then those discussions follow. And then after that, we have, can decide whether or not we want to spend time on it. Because the votes theoretically are the important things that we.
Have to do.
Have to do. And to fit them in after things which are less important doesn't seem to make sense.
I think that would be, I think, I don't know, I got, I got two choices on that. One, we could, we would route it through governance or there's other options. We could, we can just try it and see whether it works.
I think you should just try it.
Yeah.
I like the idea.
Yeah, because it is an interesting.
It's, it's not a unique idea. I think every other board member, every other board meeting worked that way. All of, almost, all of the board meetings work that way.
Well, some are subject related. Like if you have a board meeting and you have a subject, you discuss it and vote. That's what we're doing, but sometimes we.
Well, first.
Like for municipal meetings, we have a subject and then we vote on it.
Yeah, but first you know what it is you have to vote on. Then you discuss it, all right? And then you vote, right? Then you discuss that subject. You don't go through and say, blah, 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 blah. Oh, and by the way, there's a vote. You know, you know, it's just, it's just a.
No, I'm just saying, in defense of how we do it, sometimes it makes sense also to discuss the subject and then vote on it. But it might depend on, so we're not going to vote to a judge.
I think of what the vote would be.
Yeah, the only difference is identifying upfront.
Oh, I see.
That there are votes.
Yeah.
And then you move down and have the discussion and the vote.
Yes.
But at least it's saying, okay, tonight we have three votes on the schedule.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So then it just moves.
Okay, are you, so are you saying that the agenda stays the same, but at the very top of the board agenda?
At the top, you say, here's what we're voting on. And then, but then I would organize the agenda so that it matches the, the structure of the votes.
I think that is, would be interesting to try.
Is that easy to do with board on track, Sarah?
We just move things around.
I would ignore board on track.
Okay. It says what, if there's a vote or not. It gives you choices along this agenda, it says that, but what you're saying.
You can just move them around. But you can move the agenda around.
All the votes should be at the top.
Yeah, I'm not happy with board on track's approach to this, okay?
But so we, but just to clarify, so if we're going to have three votes.
Yes.
We'd have vote, topic one, topic two, topic three, vote, vote, vote. Would those be the first three items of the agenda then?
Yes.
In front of.
Yeah, then we discuss them in that order.
And then, and then that round out at the end of the meeting, any of the, the reports and other little things that just sort of don't need a vote?
Yeah, that's right.
And where would that fall versus the ED report or the parent and?
So votes before that.
Yeah, votes. We would start with.
Okay, we start.
Requires a vote.
But we did today, we voted Jess on before we started anything.
All right, so all.
Good move.
I think it's worth a try.
Okay, yeah, let's try it. I'm, I'm giving for, so.
That's not a board on track thing. That is literally just rearrange, we rearrange it.
That's right. That's correct.
All right, so.
And I was only asking a question on to try Sarah, Chris.
Drag and drop. Actually, very easy to do.
So Sarah, you're saying that this is thumbs up from, from administrative side? You can, you can do this for us? So I will take the action item for the. Yes, so I will, I will be proposing a May, May, May board agenda that will have all the votes at the top.
But that does mean, yeah, no, because it does mean that everyone has to, if there are votes that are needed, they need to be in early, right? Makes it hard to add it.
Right, so it's, right, so if, if you have, if you have items that require votes, I need them as a chair a week before. And actually, I will be preparing, actually, I will, if you have items that are going to need to be prepared, I will probably delegate the, depending on what time our meeting, I will need, I will need them early. Because I will be unavailable from the 14th through the 27th. So get, get them in early. Vote early and often, as they would say in Chicago. All right, meeting effectiveness, got that. Any other business before entering in, before the motion for executive session?